Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it is six P. M. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month in the council chambers at City Hall. City Clerk Assistant, could you please call roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sharma.
Present, thank you.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here, thank you.
Councilmember Minigar.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rains.
Present.
And Mayor Genaway.
Present.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments on the closed session item. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request to speak form to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit is three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for members of the public to share comments with the city council. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, city staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information needed. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, are there any request to speak forms?
No, Mayor, there are no forms.
Okay, thank you. So, public comments on the closed session item are now closed. We will now move on to our closed session. Deputy City Attorney Kearns, will you please read us into closed session?
Yes, Mayor. Council will now convene in closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven for performance evaluation of the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are called back to order at 7:00 PM. And we have two new faces sitting around the table here, so I'd like to introduce the public to our new city clerk, Marissa Assiston. And joining us tonight is the deputy city attorney Brendan Kearns. So also have another welcome to Laguna Niguel, the new pastor at St. Timothy's, Father Patrick Moses. And at this time, I'd like to ask Father Patrick to provide the invocation, if you could please step to the podium.
And first, I'd like to thank the council for their gracious invitation to be here tonight. And let us pray. Wise and loving God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. We thank you for the many blessings and your abundant goodness to us. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. I pray for our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular, this assembled council. I ask you graciously to grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. And I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Laguna Niguel. We ask this in your most blessed name. Amen.
Thank you, Father Patrick. Now I'd like to ask Scout Troop 700 to please come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack 700, color guard, advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Please join us in the pledge of all idiots to our nation
and to the public for which it stands, one nation, the God indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all. Two.
Boys, you did a fantastic job. If you could stay down there in the well and if the leaders could join them, the city council will come and stand with you for pictures. In fact, you might want to step back a little bit. Well, didn't they do a fantastic job? Yes! You did a great job! So thank you for starting our meeting tonight for us. So I'm going to pass the microphone to each of you. If you could please tell us your first name, what school you're going to go to come September, or actually come August, and what grade you're going to be in. And the leaders, if you could just tell us your name, because we know you're already graduated.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jeanette DeLeo.
Hello, buddy.
Hello, buddy. My name is Benji.
Hello, my name is Logan.
Hello, my name is Henry.
Hello, my name is Henry.
Hello, my name is Sebastian.
Hello, my name's Patrick.
Hi, my name is Ethan Snyder.
Okay, well, thank you. And we can tell that these scouts are really enjoying summer vacation because there's no mention of school, so. Okay. And as a community, we appreciate and value what you do as troop leaders because you are developing the future leaders in our community. So I'd like to present you with the mayor's challenge coin. Thank you. And now let's stand all together for pictures. Okay, thank you. And let's give them another big hand, and who's going to dismiss?
Color guard dismissed.
Okay. Our next presentation is for our volunteer of the month. So our volunteer of the month is to recognize a member of the community whose acts of kindness, generosity, and service are those things which they don't do to be recognized, but they certainly contribute to the quality of life of here and also to those that they help. So I'd like to call forward our volunteer of the month, Kendra McMahone. Kendra, if you could please join us. Right up here. Okay, Kendra is a Laguna Niguel resident that is not only kind to her neighbors, family, and friends, but also to the many animals that find their way to the Mission Viejo Animal Services Center, which is where Laguna Niguel's animals are sheltered and adopted through a partnership between both cities. Kendra has been volunteering at the center since 2014. Her passion and specialty is walking the many dogs housed at the center. She chose to volunteer there after adopting her dog Winston. Winston was rescued from the overcrowded Riverside Shelter, so she wanted to give back to the place that saved Winston and that brought them together. Her love for our city's homeless animals is evident in every shift, and it's obvious that the love she gets back from the animals that she spends time there, that it's mutual. She is known for being extremely reliable, punctual, and for often helping to cover extra shifts throughout the week, sometimes on a moment's notice. Much appreciated. Kendra also enjoys being part of the success for the future of every animal, knowing that their second or third chance at a forever home will be bright. She truly had no idea that when she signed up to volunteer that her life would be so enriched. We are so thankful to have Kendra as an amazing community volunteer, and on behalf of the entire city council, I am proud to recognize you as the July 2022 Volunteer of the Month. Congratulations, Kendra, and thank you very much. So we have this certificate for you. And I also have a mayor's challenge coin for you in this pocket, if I can reach it. So, and this is in appreciation for your commitment to community. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
I would, just a little bit. Oh, thank you. First, I want to thank you all, Mayor Jennoe and the rest of the city council members. I appreciate the honor. I don't expect it, but I appreciate it. I really do. And I just love volunteering at the Mission Viejo Animal Services Center. It's a wonderful place to volunteer. The staff is incredible. Two of them are here, director's here, and Courtney's here. There they are. And they're very, really skilled at what they do, and our animals are so loved and cared for. They're the best of the best, and so I really appreciate, I'm very grateful, for the opportunity that I have to volunteer there. I just, it's immeasurable joy that it brings me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your dedication to all of our furry friends in the community. Yeah, much appreciated. So, and it's people like Kendra who make Laguna Niguel such a remarkable city. So I think we're going to get a little paparazzi here. Thank you, Kendra. Okay, and our next recognition is to our youth committee members who are graduating. And council member Jennings and I are the co-council liaisons to the youth committee. So we have two of them here with us tonight, so if they could join us, Dishia Serrano and Jason Liu. Oh, and Maeve is here, too. And actually, if I could have council member Jennings hand you your plaques. But first of all, I'd like to say the youth committee, Maeve, we're getting yours. We didn't know you were going to be here tonight, so thank you for joining us. Yeah, that was quick. Wow, Jennifer's fast. But you know, the Laguna Niguel Youth Committee holds a very special place in our hearts. I know I've been council liaison to the youth committee for eight years, and this is a committee that not only do the students provide the voice of the teenagers to the Laguna Niguel City Council and to the Laguna Niguel Parks and Recreation Department for all of the services and programming that takes place for teens, but also it is just amazing and wonderful and so fulfilling to watch all of you grow. You come to us as maybe 15-year-old freshmen and serve on the youth committee, and when you leave the youth committee, you are going off to college. So there is quite a bit of development skills, creating your voice, learning how to work with others, all of those important life skills, but also those leadership skills that we get to see develop on the youth committee. So thank you for being part of the youth committee. I'll tell you, each year, there's a very strong list of applicants who apply to the youth committee, and the youth committee is 15 of our high school students. And they have a budget. They have programs that they put forward. One of the youth committee programs that actually the city won an award for a couple of years ago was Pizza with Police, and that program continues very strong. They've also worked a lot on environmental education and drug abuse awareness. So you just do a fantastic job of communicating with your peers in ways that we may not be able to. So your voice is greatly appreciated. So I'm going to pass you the microphone, and if you can tell us how long you've been on the youth committee, what high school you are from, and now where are you going to? So we'll start with Dishia.
Um, I have been on the committee for three years now, and I went to Santa Margarita Catholic High School, and I'm going to be going to UC San Diego next year.
I have been on the youth committee for the past two years. I was also from Santa Margarita Catholic High School, and I'm going to be going to Boise State University.
I've been on the youth committee for two years. I went to Capistrano Valley High School, and next year I'm going to UCLA.
Okay, well, fantastic. We wish you all the very, very best. We hope to see you again here in Laguna Niguel. In fact, we kind of require it because we want to know what our youth is doing all along the way, and we do, you know, have a great fondness for you, appreciate what you've done, but we do want to see you back. So we are going to take some pictures, and if Jennifer could grab one more challenge coin, again, I have my pocket somewhere. So this is the mayor's challenge coin, and it has City Hall on the front, but it's being presented to you for your commitment to community and your excellence in service. So thank you very much for serving Laguna Niguel and for serving your peers and the youth of Laguna Niguel. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give them a hand as they go off to college. Okay, and our final presentation tonight is Parks Makes Life Better. So if I could invite Director Ron Rivera up here. And if Mayor Protem Raines and I are the co-council liaisons to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, oh, we see staff is joining us. Fantastic. Come on down. So they all have to get here before I start reading, huh? And there's a lot to read. Hello? Okay. So all of this tiny print says, "Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' engagement; and whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and activities, teen programs, senior centers, adult enrichment programs, community events, and beyond; and whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities; and whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape." Yeah, no wonder it's tiny print. "And whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and serving as key points of service, helping our communities heal both physically and emotionally; and whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space to come together peacefully and serving as key points of service; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities; and whereas Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital service to communities through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Elaine Jennoe, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the city of Laguna Niguel, and encourage all community members to recognize and celebrate the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space, and facilities for the health, wellness, development, inspiration, and safety of all residents." health, wellness, development, inspiration, and safety of all residents. So, thank you to our Parks and Recreation Department for bringing all of this to Laguna Niguel. You do a fantastic job. We are so proud of you and so appreciative of what each and every one of you do. And I will give the microphone to your fearless leader, Director Ron Rivera.
Thank you so much. We are so happy to be celebrating Parks Recreation Month, Parks Make Life Better this July, with events every single weekend and activities every single day. First off, we'd like to say thank you. That is our honor and privilege to serve this community. We are truly blessed as a city to have so many wonderful amenities, programs, parks, and open space. We would like to thank our city council for all their support. Your leadership and support has led the city to all the wonderful infrastructure we have in place. This has made Laguna Niguel a beautiful place to live, work, and play. We want to thank our Parks and Rec Commissioners, Senior Committee, and Youth Committee. Your support, feedback, and dedication to our community is appreciated and respected. Thank you. We want to thank our city manager, Tammy Laterno, and Deputy City Manager, Justin Martin. Your continued guidance, trust, and support provides us the opportunity to be successful in what we do every day. Thank you. We need to thank all the department heads and city staff, Public Works, Community Development, Police Services, Orange County Fire Authority, Finance and Management Services. We cannot do what we do without any of you. We are all one team in Laguna Niguel, and we are a proud team, and we work very hard together. So, thank you for all your support. Finally, I need to thank my wonderful Parks and Recreation team. Without their hard work, we could not have Parks Make Life Better. There are some amazing staff members on our team. Some are out working right now, and some are relaxing for their day of hard work, but some are here today to celebrate. I'd like to introduce to my right Gretchen Malcolm, Recreation Supervisor for 20-some years. Thank you. I'd like to thank Hunter Osirno, our Recreation Coordinator, Jeff Kirby, our Recreation Supervisor, Derek, our Recreation Coordinator, and our wonderful Administrative Secretary, Stacy Tovar Chavez. Our staff is one team. They do a wonderful job, and we are so privileged to serve this community. So, thank you all and celebrate Parks Make Life Better Month by enjoying the parks, having fun in the sun, and enjoy your summer. Thank you so much for today's proclamation.
And thank you again to our Parks and Rec team. And Kevin is going to take a picture. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you. And that is it for the presentations. Okay. So, now we will move on to the closed session report. Deputy City Attorney Kearns, is there anything to report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier tonight, the city council met in closed session for a performance review of the city manager. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the closed session report. And we will now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request-to-speak form to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to council chambers. Please be aware that there will be a limit of three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for members of the public to share comments with the city council. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, city staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information as needed. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker, but you may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, I have some request-to-speak forms right here. Are there any additional forms?
No, Mayor, there are no additional forms.
Okay, thank you. So, public comments is now closed. All of these forms are for Agenda Item Six. So, we will poll Agenda Item Six and address that at that time. Okay, so we're pulling Agenda Item Six. Are there any other consent calendar items that need to be polled? Mayor Protem? Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the balance?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Rains to approve the balance, seconded by Councilmember Minigar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries? Okay, now we will move on to Agenda Item Six. Okay, so we have public comments for Agenda Item Six, which is the approval of Amendment Number Eight to the Professional Services Agreement with Carlson Strategic Land Solutions, Inc., to provide environmental consulting services for a residential development project. And our first speaker is Cheryl Friedling. If you could please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cheryl Friedling. My address is 30571 North Hampton in Laguna Niguel. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and speak this evening. The, my purpose for being here really is to provide an opportunity for myself and several of my neighbors and colleagues to speak about the proposed Cove at El Niguel project. I understand that this item is on your agenda as Item Number Six, and it's an opportunity to amend the consultant fees. But what I wanted to do and some of my colleagues who are with me tonight is really just use this as a stepping stone to introduce those of us in the community who are opposed to the project as a whole. Now, the project, as you may know, is a 22-unit condominium development proposed by the Honda Development Corporation. And we appreciate that the appropriate time to really have a robust conversation with the city is at the Planning Commission level. And so, we will wait and have most of our substantive comments shared with the city officials at that time. But at this point, we felt it opportune to introduce ourselves to you as community members. We have not been vocal, and we have not been visible. And this gives us an opportunity to introduce ourselves as passionate and engaged residents who uniformly and unanimously oppose this project. Who are we? We are almost 1,500 homes in both Charter Terrace Homeowners Association and Niguel Summit. All of us are opposed to the Cove at El Niguel project. And we have the presidents of our homeowners associations with us who will speak to you about the votes that have been taken in our governance that has opposed this project at the local level. As you may know, this project is proposed to be located at what we consider to be ground zero of the most devastating slope failure in Orange County history. We are here because our goal is not to be NIMBYs and not to be anti-development. Our goal is only safety. We find that this is an inappropriate site for a proposed condominium development. And we are unified and energized. And you will hear about us and see us as the Planning Commission schedule moves forward. We have task forces and passionate residents who have, as they hear about this project and some of the consequences that could occur, have volunteered and are coming forward to become more activist in opposition to this project. We have a litigation committee. We have a publicity committee. We have a geotechnical committee. We have smart and talented volunteer residents who are working all of those committees. I have for you here, if you haven't seen it already, there was an article in the Los Angeles Times back in May. This is something that our publicity committee has worked on. And they are also working with other reporters and TV stations who have asked our publicity committee to notify them before the Planning Commission because they feel that this is such a significant story.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Friedling.
Thank you.
The next speaker, James Kozel. Please state your name and address.
Jim Kozel, 30452 La Porte in Laguna Niguel, California. So, I'm the president of the Niguel Summit Homeowners Association that encompasses the 1998 Estrel slope collapse and the May 2022 coastal fires, which impacted Coronado Point, which is a sub-association of Niguel Summit. We are now spending $60,000 for geotechnical reviews of the Liso Summit Trail. I hope you all enjoy it, because of the damage of the coastal fires. We are doing this to determine possible slope failure. In the past, we have spent $80,000 on geotechnical reviews on the various slopes throughout the Niguel Summit community to review slope stability as we complied with Orange County fire requirements. So, when I see Item Six on the agenda and consider our response to the EIR regarding new home construction on the base of the Estrel slope, I'm concerned about the amount of work and the extent of the geotechnical review for this project. When the geotechnical work was done after the 1998 slide, the assumption was that the space below the collapse would be designated as open space. Accordingly, the infill of slope debris from the collapse was used to create the buttress and the surrounding hillsides without the removal of the slip planes. This was not designed in anticipation of construction at the bottom of the slope. We, as a Niguel Summit Board, have been warned that the geotechnical work in 1998 would not be acceptable to current hillside construction standards if the slope reconstruction work from 1998 was done in 2022. The Niguel Summit Community Association is very concerned about the slope integrity above the homes that are being built, especially during abnormal rainy seasons and the past intention that the base of the slope would be open space. Further concerns revolve around our future liability if the slope on our property collapses because of the above-mentioned slip planes. We are hoping that the geotechnical review, which is being proposed, is sufficient to satisfy our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Smith.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Smith. I live at 30581 North Hampton Lane in Laguna Niguel. I'm the vice president of the Charter Terrace Homeowners Association. Our association voted unanimously to oppose the Cove at El Niguel project. More personally, basically, my backyard is adjacent to the buttress. So, I'm very concerned about cutting into the buttress and what sort of risk that might pose for me and my family. I live with my two small children at my home that are three, and my daughter will be one next month. I'm also concerned about the prospect of anyone who might live there in the future at the base of this buttress, that if there is a failure, potentially, it may put any future residents at risk if this proposal is approved. So, we'll be opposing the project at every step of the administrative process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sarah Naschalis, and I live at 30652 Villa Estrel. I've written my comments, and by the way, thank you for this opportunity. I've written my comments out because I want to make sure that everything that I'm concerned about is addressed by me. My husband and I live on Villa Estrel in the first house that did not slide in 1998. When we bought our house in 2005, we had a lot of concerns. We did our research on the various mitigations to the slope, and we were reassured by the realtors, the property owners, the Niguel Summit HOA, and members of the City Community Development Department that the property from Villa Estrel down to Crown Valley would remain an undeveloped area due to the fact of the ancient slide area and inherent risks in building on such property again. Over the last 17 years, we've faced previous efforts and proposals to disregard history and the facts and build at the bottom of the slope. Fortunately, in the past, residents and the Laguna Niguel Council made sure these efforts failed. It's hard to understand what has changed over the years in our town's leadership, that the Cove proposal would come to this point, this far, in the face of safety, good sense, and accepted facts. The Cove at El Niguel project is proposed by Han Builders, the very contractor that was responsible for building on ancient slide area that caused disasters for many, many people. Some are regarding environmental impact issues. Laguna Niguel, our town, has developmental standards based on safety, aesthetics, codes, and under no circumstances should the city be approving alternatives that are being requested by the builders. Those things, the alternatives are dangerous and endanger the slope, the stability of the slope. The buttress, number two, was built to specs that were necessary for the stability of the slope. Any so-called adjustments that are being requested are risky and dangerous for our homes, the homes alongside, below, and Crown Valley Parkway itself. Cutting into the buttress that was engineered specifically to preserve the property for 22 condos just makes absolutely no sense. Traffic. Crown Valley Parkway is very heavily traveled.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
It's the artery between PCH and the five.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Andy Zalay.
I also want to say that the coast fire, we were taken out of our homes.
Thank you. Your time is up.
And this is going to cause the additional possibilities of fire.
Andy Zalay?
Hello. I'm Andy Zalay, and I live two homes over from where Sarah lives. And also, I'm one of the homes that didn't slide down. I happen to be an engineer, and I have string gauges in the back of my, the back of my yard. And I agree with all of the testimony that has been given here regarding safety. I build wind farms, and I've never had a slide. I've done that for 30 years. And it just, I'm very concerned that today, we are here, and you just heard someone talk about parks here in Laguna Niguel and the safety of our community. And now, you are, and then we heard about the wildfire. We were locked down, just like Sarah was, with the wildfire. So, we have this issue here of the climate change, the water-energy nexus, and then we have this call to put in 22 apartments. I'd like to help you, and I'd like to work with you on coming up with solutions because I don't think that's the right solution. I think one of the things that we did when we build wind farms is we look at the best and highest use. So, I ask you, what is the best and highest use over here? We have all of these residents. We have birds. We have traffic. And I don't see those being addressed in the EIS. I think that if I were in your position, I would reject it, and I would just say, let's look at the highest and best use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. City Clerk Assistant, are there any more requests to speak?
No, Mayor, there are no more.
Okay. So, public comments on this Agenda Item are now closed. City Manager Laterno, do we have any comments for staff on this, specifically on this Agenda Item?
No, but we're happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on the Agenda Item before us? Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So my question is, this particular agenda item is to expand on the environmental impact report for the project. Is that correct?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and to Council, or to, excuse me, Madam Mayor Protem. Ray's question. The item before you is to address an increase in the cost of the environmental analysis for the project due to revisions to the project midstream.
And also, during that EIR process, there is a public comment period, so there's no decisions that have been made. This is a process that we do to see if we're going to go forward with the project, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 6?
I'll move the item.
Moved by Mayor Protem Rains. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Sharma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, so that concludes our consent calendar, and we will now move on to public hearing item number one, and that is the introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-218, amending Title VII Highways Rights of Way and Vehicles of the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code. Ms. Gregg, the city's contract planner, will provide us with the report, and followed by a legal and regulatory authority review by Mr. Michael Johnson, the city's retained legal expert in wireless communications. Ms. Gregg.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. As you said, my name is Amber Gregg, and I'm a contract planner, and it's an honor to be here with you guys tonight. I'm going to give a second to bring up the PowerPoint presentation. So as the mayor just introduced, we'll be talking about communication facilities within the public rights of way this evening. And to provide you a little bit of background information on that, in response to residents, Wireless Telecommunication Regulations Update was included as part of the Niguel, our Laguna Niguel Strategic Plan as one of Community Development's action items. The previous time we had updated, adopted regulations were in 2008, and then we had a subsequent amendment in 2010 that specifically had to do with design regulations. Fast forward to 2019, and a report and order was issued by the Federal Communications Facility, or Commission, or the FCC, for communication facilities within public rights of way. And the program before you tonight is proposed to bring the city into compliance with the applicable state and federal requirements. So there's a long history of regulations and requirements associated with wireless telecommunication facilities, and we'll go into that a little bit more in the presentation. But in summary, state and federal regulations substantially limit local governments' ability to regulate communication facilities. However, we do have the ability, or to retain the ability, to regulate time, place, and manner, and the documents before you tonight do just that. So as part of your packet, you have an ordinance, and that ordinance establishes general regulations within Title VII dealing with public rights of way. And what that ordinance says is that the city will establish policies and procedures and standards that address communication facilities. Resolution 221403 is that policy and procedures manual that is referenced by the ordinance in order to implement those communication facilities requirements. And what that regulation does is it establishes general provisions for communication wireless facilities, as well as application requirements, standard conditions of approval, location requirements, design standards, and administrative variances. And then lastly, Resolution 221404 establishes the fees that the city can charge in order to recoup the cost of reviewing and processing those applications as part of the permitting process. So all of these things together result in a communication facilities permit. And so what does that review process look like? Well, it looks a lot like our processes today. So as I said previously, in 2008, we did adopt regulations and a process associated with that, and this permit application will be consistent with past practice in that an applicant would provide an application to the Planning Division in Community Development. We would review it for standards and regulations and ensure consistency with that. And then after that permit is approved by the Planning Division, then they would continue on to Public Works for an encroachment permit, as well as the Building Department for their building permits. As I said, there is a lot of legal and regulatory framework that went into this, so I'd like to invite Michael Johnston with Telecom Law Firm. Telecom Law Firm is a longtime consultant for the city of Laguna Niguel, specifically for telecommunications law.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Protem, members of the council. As Amber mentioned, my name is Michael Johnston, outside counsel for the city on telecommunications issues. And I want to just bring you kind of through the three main sources of law that impact your authority to regulate these sorts of facilities. And the first area law is California Public Utilities Code. It requires that the city allow telecommunications providers into the public rights of way to provide their services. The second is federal law, and federal law generally restricts local authority to enact what are called effective prohibitions of service. They prevent the unreasonable discrimination of functionally-equivalent service providers. They tell local governments that they cannot regulate RF emissions to the extent that those emissions comply with FCC standards. And they also require the cities to act within a reasonable time on particular applications and make their decisions in writing based on substantial evidence. And the FCC is empowered with implementing that particular statute, and in doing so, has entered two key interpretations that are most relevant to the item before you today. The first one is that the reasonable time that the city has to act on these applications is deemed to be 60 or 90 days from start to finish. And the meaning of what it means to establish an effective prohibition essentially means that we cannot enact any regulations that materially inhibit or limit the ability of a provider to compete in what the FCC calls a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment. The standard itself has narrowed your authority to decide what these facilities look like and where they go. So this new policy and set of regulations is intended to bring you up to compliance with this new federal standard and to allow the staff to make administrative decisions that satisfy the very vast timeframes within which you have to approve applications. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those as well.
May this council have any questions for either Ms. Gregg or Mr. Johnson?
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm so sorry. So a couple things. We did receive a letter from AT&amp;T's Legal Counsel today, and I just wanted to make the council aware of that. Both RWG as well as Telecom Law Firm had a chance to review that letter and did not find anything that would preclude this council from taking action on this item today, and found that all the regulations before you tonight is still compliant with the requirements as noted. And then the other thing is that on your dais, there is an errata form located there, and what it's requesting is that we strike a specific section that Mr. Johnston just referenced, and that's in regards to a shot clock. And the purpose of that is it's duplicative of federal law, and it's not necessary. And if it is updated, we would have to update our policies again, and so staff believes it's better to remove that from that. So we're just requesting you remove that small section because it's unnecessary. And with that, staff recommends approval of the project with the recommendation as noted of removing 2.3 and introduce Ordinance 22218, as stated in the staff report. And of course, we're available to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Now, are there any questions? Councilman Sharma.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so initially, I'm going to just go through my notes, and bear with me as we go through, because we did receive this information today to offset some of the questions maybe that I have. But on page one of the ordinance, it's Section 1, subsection B, where it reads, "The report and order further limits local fees for use of public rights of way and public infrastructure to cost-based, non-recurring and recurring fees." One thing that I would ask for clarification on is the addition of the wording "cost-based" in front of recurring fees, because when I look at that, it doesn't, although one could read it one way, one could also read the statement a different way, where it's just singularly recurring fees as opposed to cost-based reoccurring fees. And I think that further specifies what type of recurring fees we're asking for.
That's right. That both recurring and non-recurring fees should be cost-based.
Correct. So just to be explicitly clear on that, I would ask that that be added there, recurring, or, sorry, cost-based recurring fees.
Excuse me, Councilman Sharma. Are you on Ordinance Number 2022-218?
Yes.
Page one?
It's page one, section one.
Section 1B.
Section B.
The report and order purports to limit local authority? I'm sorry, I heard you say something.
That is correct. Yeah, that's the subsection, and it's read in here, recurring and non-recurring fees as far as what we're allowed to charge as a city for the services that are being rendered by the city. So I just asked for clarification in writing there that the recurring fees are cost-based fees with the addition of the words "cost-based," because it can be read both ways. Secondarily, in subsection C of Section 1, same page, and I understand that the wording is taken almost verbatim from other language that you're referencing, but it says, at the end of that subsection C, it says, "Provided the aesthetic requirements are reasonable," and they give an example of technically feasible and published in advance. The question that I have here is, when we're talking about reasonableness, and I think the letter addresses that somewhat too, that we received this evening or today, reasonableness doesn't discuss cost-feasibleness of what's being discussed, because reasonableness can be subjective at that point. So at what point do we get into a conversation of whether or not the requests that we're making are reasonable relative to cost as opposed to technically feasible?
The restrictions, the limitations on the city's authority with respect to cost should only be applicable to the fees that we charge. The limitations on local aesthetic regulations that I believe you're referencing?
Yes.
The, what is deemed technically feasible and what is technically infeasible is a discussion for the applicant and the planners processing that application. So some of the reasons that an application, that a particular regulation may not be technically feasible is if, you know, there's a separation requirement for communications facilities on a utility pole, and there has to be a specific separation from electrified electric lines or communications lines. If one of the regulations strictly construed would require the city to, would require the applicant to violate that safety regulation, that safety, that safety regulation would deem that particular proposal not technically feasible, and they would be able to deploy the facility as, as they would, you know, be able to comply with that regulation.
So is it your suggestion this aesthetic requirement being reasonable has nothing to do with the decorative aspects of what the city might require versus the technical aspects?
They're, they're very interconnected. So as reasonable aesthetic regulations, for them to be reasonable must be feasible from a technical side, right? We can't require them to put the antennas underground because they won't operate underground.
Sure.
So an aesthetic regulation that all antennas underground would not be technically feasible. So they're kind of intertwined in that regard.
Okay. Bear with me 10 seconds here. I'm going to move forward to, a lot of pages here. It's page 11, and it would be subsection 11, where it says acoustic analysis. It's my understanding that a lot of concern that residents have had over time specific to 5G or 4G, or it's the acoustic aesthetics, if you will, relative to their distance or proximity to the new equipment. And the acoustic analysis here, it starts off by saying the applicant shall submit an acoustic analysis, but then gives an option to default to the manufacturer's acoustic analysis as opposed to hiring or engaging contract services to determine whether or not that acoustic analysis is being appropriately applied for our city. So the concern that I have with the way that this is worded is it gives kind of a backdoor for the installers or the company, if you will, to just say, well, the manufacturer said acoustically this was sound, so regardless of whether or not anybody went out there and checked it, or we had a second set of eyes on it.
So the, you're correct that it does offer a second path towards an approval. The, the concept that we're trying to nail down is that if the manufacturer's specifications show exactly what the ambient noise level would be from, from the equipment, and if that ambient noise level is, is very low, then they would have the option to show from the manufacturer's specs that just is not going to possibly violate any sort of noise regulations. If on review of that application, that those manufacturer's specifications show that there could be a potential issue and that it needs verification, the city would have discretion to require a full-blown acoustic analysis to make sure that that particular equipment in that particular location is compliant with the very specific noise standards for that, that area.
Okay. All right. Moving forward then. Location preferences, which is under section, it's on page 22, section 2.6, subsection B. And then, again, this was referenced in here, the 150 feet away, and the, the verbiage prefers, the city prefers. As, as I read through the material that was presented earlier and compared it to what my initial reaction was when I saw prefers, it, the words preference, my interpretation now is that it gives us that flexibility to say, well, you know what our preference was, right? As opposed to setting hard, fast, and stone 150 feet, even though most residents would prefer that it not be even that close to their house.
So the, the reason that we structure these location preferences as preferences is in response to the FCC's requirement that the city cannot effectively prohibit the provision of services. It is certainly possible that a site could be deployed within 150 feet of a residence, and federal law would mandate that you approve that facility. Or at least it would give the wireless provider an opportunity to sue the city for an effective prohibition. So the ordinance or the regulations are structured to guide applicants into the most preferred locations, and if they end up in a less preferred location, that they have to show their analysis and show their work as to why a more preferred location would not be technically feasible. So in essence, it works down to, you know, dropping essentially a circle on a map where they want to serve and identifying each potential pole or location within that circle that could work, right? And if there's one of those poles that is in a more preferred location, that's the one they have to use based on the standards listed here. If there is no other location within that circle, and it happens to be in a less preferred location, that may be approved pursuant to these regulations.
Good. Okay, thank you. Just a quick comment. I had thought about advertisements and signage on it too, but I did see that was listed in here, so that would be a nice word for Laguna Niguel to see, whatever company listed all over, all over our city. Moving forward into Exhibit B, page 8, and it's 5.4, delinquent payments. I know that this is a, this is the initial application that would be submitted, but in this delinquent payment, it asks for a sum of money equal to a percent for delinquent payments. Would we not be able to pre-fill that as part of this process here as opposed to a dollar amount for services rendered that would otherwise vary depending upon what our service costs were?
So this delinquent payment provision is actually a little bit different than the regular permitting process. This is the contract that the city would execute for a carrier to have the right to attach to a pole that you own in the right-of-way. So a streetlight that the, that the city owns had, these are typically common places for wireless providers to cite their equipment. If the city owns that pole, they have to contract with you for the right to occupy that pole. And then section 5.4 is a provision of that contract that says, if you don't pay us your, your monthly fee or annual fee on time, then you are, you will owe us kind of like a delinquent payment for, you know, failure to, to pay us on time, right? There's an administrative overhead cost associated with that failure to pay, because there's an expectation that you'd be receiving that money.
Okay.
So it's a little bit unrelated to the permitting aspect. Mostly, this will only come up in the situation where you're allowing carriers on your own streetlights to deploy facilities.
Understood, and thank you for that clarification. And then the last item that I have here is subsection, or section 6.6, which it says, it refers to change in equipment. It's on page 10 of Exhibit B. And it mentions here that the licensee has the ability to come in and make modifications to and replace, alter, enhance, or upgrade the equipment so long as such modification, replacement, alteration, et cetera, does not increase pole loading beyond the pole load that was initially established and approved. So in this, my interpretation is beyond the technical capacities of what's being changed, if, if a vendor comes in and says, we're going to change the aesthetics if, if a vendor comes in and says, we're going to change the aesthetics of the equipment too, I don't know, I don't, I'm not entirely clear that that requires them to go back through the process of permitting here.
Just a few lines above, I'll just read it here. It says, "Any modification that would involve increasing the pole loading beyond what was established?"
Yeah.
"Or changing the appearance or aesthetic compatibility with the surrounding infrastructure shall require licensee to submit a new application for such nonpermitted equipment." So it does provide a little bit of flexibility for aesthetic changes that were not previously reviewed.
And that, that was my reservation. It allows for that flexibility for aesthetic changes.
Okay.
But they went through a permitting process to get aesthetically approved for our city.
And I believe in our guidelines, there is, in that language in there, that identifies that any amendments to that approval would still have to come back and be, go through the permitting process. And the fees are structured as such too, that any amendments need to get a communications facilities permit or an amendment to that communications facilities permit.
Okay. And just summarily, you've mentioned it several times during your presentation, we're extremely limited as to what we can and can't do, and within this presentation, we've got the most of basically what we can accommodate here.
Yes. The, the most that you can do is, is to hone in on design regulations that are compatible with the city's existing streetscape. Outside of that, it's, it's relatively limited.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more further questions.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Minigal.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you very much for responding to those specific questions. I had the privilege for 10 years to serve in the planning commission of this great city. And at the time, in those years, specifically and explicitly 2008 and 2009, 2010, we did have quite a few applicants coming to the city to request coming to the planning commission to get their approval with regard to the deployment of these cell towers all over the city. From a public perception at the time, the public sentiment was not there. We used to get quite a few people coming and being against the proposed plans. But having researched at the time that what Federal Communications Commission had mandated, and now with the latest back in 2019 by the federal government, a lot of cities, actually not a lot, 99% of the cities are basically disabled in that respect. So they have to comply and conform with the federal requirements. So from a federal perspective, I am in favor of making a positive motion on this specific item for the amendment of Title VII. The only marginal thing that would still be with me is the public perception that is still out there. They think that when you install, when you deploy any of those cell towers for wireless communication systems, then it may have some kind of potential health hazard. But that remains to be seen. We as a city, we as a municipal corporation, we're not in that position to make a saying or, quite frankly, to have a position on that. Because I recognize and I acknowledge that the telecommunication carriers can basically file a lawsuit against those municipalities, and I've read that in some cities, they've done it. And who came out to be the winner? At all the cases, it was basically the, the communication, telecommunications firms. So do we need the tell sour, tell cell towers? Absolutely. Because when you're, you know, when you're moving from point A to point B, and with the topo that we have in this city, which has a lot of grays and a lot of slopes, and with differentiation elevations, then we do need that uniformity and complexity of those cell towers so that we can receive messages regardless if it's going to be via a cellphone or via other means of telecommunications. So, so in conclusion, I'm in favor of this proposed amendment to Title VII. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Minigal. Mayor Protem, any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, the public discussion, or the public hearing discussion is now open. Oh, did you have any further comments, or? Okay. The public hearing discussion is now open to receive testimony from the public regarding ordinance number 2022-218, amending Title VII highways, right-of-ways, and vehicles of the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code. City Clerk Assistant, are there any requests to speak on this item?
I have no speaker forms, Mayor.
Okay. So public communications is now closed. The public hearing is closed on this particular item. Can I have a motion to, number one, waive full reading and make any amendments to and introduce ordinance number 2022-218 by title? Ordinance number 2022-218. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Niguel amending Title VII of the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code, establishing regulations for communication facilities in the public rights of way, and finding this ordinance to be exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. Two, direct that the proposed ordinance with any changes to it be placed on the agenda for the August 2nd, 2022 City Council meeting, and adopt the ordinance at that meeting. Three, adopt Resolution Number 2022-1403, adopting a policy regarding permitting requirements and development standards for communication facilities within the public rights of way. And four, adopt Resolution Number 2022-1404, establishing and adopting fees and charges for communication facilities in the public rights of way. Is there a motion?
Mayor Jenaway, we would have one change to number three, to omit Exhibit A, Section 2.3D, as placed on the dais.
Also the amendment in the verbiage on 20, or 218.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So the amendment to the verbiage on two, to repeat that, 2022-218?
Correct.
And that was, the amended verbiage was?
For the reoccurring fees.
The recurring, the recurring fees?
To, to reference that there, the fees for use of public rights of way.
The cost basis of the recurring fees.
That's correct.
Cost-based, nonrecurring, and cost-based recurring fees.
Okay. And everyone get that? And then also deleting the section that was in our red folders.
That's correct.
Okay. Everything, we've got everything that we need to do with this? Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sharma, seconded by Councilman Minigal. Deputy City Attorney Kearns.
Yes, I was going to read the title of the ordinance if we're ready.
Okay.
Perfect. This is ordinance number 2022-218. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Niguel, amending Title VII of the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code, establishing regulations for communications facilities in the public rights of way, and finding this ordinance to be exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. Sequa. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Is everybody ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public hearing item, and we'll now move on to council reports, and then city manager and department reports. Councilman Minigal, would you please start?
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just one good news, during the last board meeting of the Transportation Corridor Agencies of Orange County, which is comprised of two sister organizations. One is San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency, that I have the privilege of representing the city. And also, the second one is the Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency. During the last board meeting on July 14th, the, the Chief Financial Officer of the agency presented to us the great news that they've been able to cut a deal basically with a Wall Street firm, and they are going to be paying $125 million of bond debt early payment. So what does it translate into? $180 million savings per year. Once you multiply that by seven years, which is the way the bond legal terms are basically approved by the board, the savings to Orange County would be $1.4 billion with a B. So, so that's a great news, because we put it in perspective, the Transportation Corridor Agencies, which is also called the Toros of Orange County, has about, had 28.4 billion traffic miles that people have used the facilities. We have 52 miles of transportation network in central and south Orange County. And when you look at the population of Southern California, more specifically, 3.2 million people living in Orange County and almost 9.9 million people living in Los Angeles County, once you add the commuters or other people that are coming from San Diego County from the south, or from the north, or from Riverside and San Bernardino Counties, trying to take advantage of the first-class toll road facilities that they can save time, then I think this is a great news that they were able to achieve that. So with that, I conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. That was good news, and we like billion with a B. Hey, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, we had our Military Support Committee meeting, and they are extremely busy right now. They just finished a successful Operation Baby Shower for our families that are having new babies, that they're bringing in and collected quite a bit of merchandise and cards and money to serve those families. As well, they are gearing up for their largest fundraiser, their annual major fundraiser, which will be a taste for the troops on October 20th. And we are asking for community volunteers that would like to help with that event. It'll be held here in the city at our community center. And so if you're interested in being a community volunteer to help our, our troops, we would appreciate your volunteering. And one final thing I have is, our Public Works Department has been doing a great job with updating and maintaining our roads. And so just wanted to put a little bug out there and, and ask if we could start working maybe on a trail maintenance plan, so we can start working on those trails as well. We've gotten our roads looking good, so maybe we can start making our trails updated a little as well. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Councilman Sharma.
Thank you. I want to thank the residents that came out tonight to speak on the Cove at El Niguel Project. You know, I, you know, I think collectively, it's our viewpoint that we want to make sure that everybody's opinions are heard, and that everything's done in a safe and effective manner, in a manner that benefits everybody. James Cozel, who is the president of the HOA Summit, mentioned tonight that his hope is that the geotechnical review is sufficient to quote-unquote "address their concerns", and that's our hope as well. And that's why my second, my vote in favor of this agenda item number six tonight. So we'll do our best to continue to move forward and make sure everybody's issues are concerned, or concerns are addressed. And then separately, I want to give my condolences to Mayor Protem Rains. Her father-in-law passed away three times, three-time bronze medal recipient, over 100 years old. So my best wishes to you and Major Rains as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. Oh, condolences to you. I'm so sorry to hear that. And just wish everybody a very happy summer, and our Parks and Rec team, you guys do a wonderful job, and looking forward to Friday, which will be a wonderful concert. So thank you for all you do. Thank you to staff. Really appreciate it. And thank you to our police services for all you do. Take care of our city. Thank you.
Tonight, we recognized our Volunteer of the Month, Kendra McMahone, for her outstanding service to the care of animals in our community. And we recognized our outgoing youth committee members. Whenever you see our youth committee members out there, our high school students, please encourage them, cheer them on. They are our future leaders, and they're doing a fantastic job. But it is a great experience. It's been an honor to serve as the, as one of the council liaisons to that committee for the past eight years, just to watch them grow and develop, and to see them come on as, as a 15-year-old and very quiet, and, and over time, they just really gain their voice and learn how to work together. So that's, that's amazing. Tonight, we awarded contracts for our repairs to our city's concrete infrastructure. So you might think, okay, we're talking about concrete. But it's important concrete, because it's public safety. It's those, those sidewalks that need repair, and it is the safety of our residents, and it also does enhance the aesthetics of our city. And then we adopted ordinances for which the council unanimously approved on June 21st for the zoning changes that are necessary for the development of our Laguna Niguel City Center. So we still have a lot of summer left here in Laguna Niguel. As you heard, this is July. This is Parks Make Life Better Month. So go out and explore. We have a free trolley for you to, to take you places. We have free concerts. Our Parks and Recreation Department has a lot of activities to offer you, so please take advantage of it. They've planned them just for you. So, and my condolences to the Rains family on the passing of your father-in-law. May his memory be eternal. City Manager LaTerno.
Thank you so much. As was mentioned, we're having an exciting summer here in Laguna Niguel, and I want to ask Director Rivera to talk tonight about some of the festival plans.
Thank you, City Manager LaTerno, and thank you, City Council. The Sea Country Festival will be taking place on Friday, August 26th, Saturday, August 27th, and Sunday, August 28th. I have some exciting highlights to talk about tonight. So far, we have 30-plus community booths, five restaurants in the Taste Laguna Niguel, two stages. One stage is having 12 community-stage participants. There's two spots left if anyone's interested in applying. We also will have a main event stage where the headliner each night. On Friday night, the headliner will be Joey Rydell's Elton John Experience. On Saturday night, we go way back to vintage, to the 80s All-Stars. And then on Sunday night, we have a 90s tribute to No Doubt, a No Doubt Experience. Pre-sale wristbands for, will start on sale on August 1st. They're $35. That gives you unlimited access to rides all day. Please look out for our postcards all over town inviting you to this event, and also check out our great commercial on social media. We have a lot more exciting announcements coming up about this event. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes our reports this evening. Okay. Thank you. Well, those are some amazing bands you announced, so we will be there every night. So in that being, for tonight, the meeting is now adjourned at 8:17 PM. Thank you, and have a nice evening.